The Broward County Commission is about to begin. Will all audience members please silence your cell phones? For those viewing from home or on mobile devices, thank you for watching. To stay informed about Broward County Government, please visit broward.com.
The meeting of the Broward County Commission is about to begin. Will all audience members please silence your cell phones? For those viewing from home or on mobile devices, thank you for watching. To stay informed about Broward County government, please visit broward.org or follow us on social media. County Commission meetings are open to the public. Members of the public wishing to be heard on any agenda item can register one of two ways. Visit registertospeak.broward.org and fill out the online registration form, or scan the QR code posted in various locations inside and just outside the commission chambers to register on your mobile device. A registration form must be completed for each item you wish to speak on. If you have trouble registering digitally, visit county administration on the fourth floor for assistance. All speakers must appear in person. No further speaker signups will be accepted after an item has been called. Please show respect for others and refrain from making impertinent slanderous remarks or personal attacks. Boisterous behavior, including applause, booing, and cheering is not permitted. Thank you for joining us. The meeting will begin shortly.
Okay, if everybody could have a seat, we're gonna go ahead and get started. Everybody has to say hello to Shane. Okay. Okay, if everybody would have a seat, we can go ahead and get started. Commissioners, if you could come back up. It is a talkative bunch today. Okay, if everybody could please have a seat and we will get started. I know, employees do. Yeah, that's right. Very exciting. I know, I know. Lot of excitement in here today. We got five. One, two, three, four. Yeah, we're good. Hey, Robert. Mackenzie. Mackenzie's just glad at it. He's got, he's gotta go all the way around the room. I know. Okay, good morning, everybody. We're gonna go ahead and get started. Once Mackenzie gets back up here. Come on, Mackenzie. Come on. Come on. I know. You're way cooler than all of us. Uh, I don't know. Good morning, everybody. Uh, this is Broward County Board of County Commissioners meeting of Tuesday, May 20th, 2025. Exciting day here in Broward County with the, uh, with the cats getting ready to go. Panthers. Cats, baby. Cats. You can call them cats, you can call them Panthers. With that, let's please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. And I would like if Linda Covert and Ronnie Eaton, uh, would, if they are in here today, if they would, uh, join us and lead the Pledge of Allegiance for us. Is Linda here?
No, Linda's not here.
She's not. Is Ronnie is. Ronnie, come on down, come on.
She let the auditor stand in for Linda. He said he was gonna do it.
I know, I know. Ronnie, Ronnie has served the Broward County for 40 years as of today. Ronnie, if you could sit and start us off.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ron. Appreciate it. With that, please remain standing. Sorry about that. It is customary that we observe a moment of silence in honor of notable persons from our community who have recently passed. Colleagues, does anyone have someone you'd wish to remember? And I'll start over here.
I do, but I think Commissioner Rogers is gonna acknowledge that person.
You want me to start on this side? Okay. Commissioner Rogers. We'll start on this side.
Let me see if I'm gonna be acknowledging the right person.
Okay.
Yes. The Honorable Reverend Dr. Matthew J. Meadows. Former state senator and representative from, okay. And I say former state senator, he, I took his place in the House. He endorsed me out of many. And so, you know, this is tough. And let me just confess. I knew of the funeral date. I just did not put it on my calendar. And I missed it. So I'm just, I can't get over it. There's no excuse, but I just wanted to say that. He's a dedicated public servant. He's a pastor also, serving with distinction in the Florida Senate from 1992 to 1998, and later in the Florida House from 2000 to 2008, representing District 94. We extend our deepest condolences to his beloved wife, Charlie, Charlie Mae Harris, their children, Matthew, Felicia, Debbie, Tommy, and Priscilla, and all those who have met and his life touched yours. And of course, I have another one, a good friend of mine. Her, her mom passed. We honor the life of Ida Elizabeth Store Cash, a cherished daughter, devoted wife, loving mother, beloved friend, born February 1931. A proud member of the Delta Sigma Theta sorority. Ida remained a devoted and active member of the sisterhood for 75 years, embodying the values of scholarship service and of giving back. She transitioned into school counseling, joined as a staff. Her legacy will endure through the many lives she has touched and the lessons she imparted, teaching us how to live with purpose, to love with intention, and to walk with dignity and grace. And we just stand and recognize both at this time. I thank you.
Senator Gill.
I just would wanna add, um, my condolences to, uh, Senator Representative Meadows' family. I had the good fortune of serving with him in the House from 20 to 24. And then, um, when I was in the Senate, worked with him while he was in the House. And, uh, he was part of our strong but mighty team in 2000 when we came in. So, he'll be missed.
Okay. Um, with that, we are also going to be recognizing Memorial Day on Monday and those who gave their lives so that we enjoy the freedoms that we have. Let's also remember all the people in the armed forces here and abroad. With that, let's pause for a moment of silence. Thank you. Please take your seat. With that, I wanna welcome everybody to the meeting and start by congratulating our Panthers. Gonna be a big night tonight, yeah? We have a chance to make it three straight appearances into the Stanley Cup Finals, and I think that's only happened once since the eighties. So, go Cats. Uh, the music today was selected by Commissioner Bogan, who selected Welcome to the Jungle. Why?
The Panther song.
Panther song.
Panther song.
And 25 or 6 to 4 by Chicago because it's the only album he has in his album collection.
It's just to commemorate a great city of Chicago where I'm from. It's a great city.
Definition of an album collection. Okay, next up, we have our employee recognition for those who have 20 or 20 more, 20 or more years of service to Broward County. And to me, this is always one of our special days on the calendar. And I say that because, you know, we've seen what has happened on a kind of federal level. Uh, and we've seen some government, government employees be demeaned and not understand the value of the employees. Lot of times, you don't see all the different things that in government employees do, whether it's making sure our water's clean, or making sure the traffic lights work, or all kinds of transportation, the bus coming. You don't recognize it until something breaks. And then you really know, you know, you're reminded of all the different things that government does. I think here in Broward County, we are acting as a counterweight to that and that we are showing the value that we have to our, to our, uh, employees. Our, our county runs really well because of all of you here. And I just wanna say that before we do this. So let's, uh, let's go recognize everybody.
Good morning. So, so I was just conferring with the mayor. And, um, we used to have a longstanding practice as, as everyone would get recognized after they get their certificate, they'd go around the dais and get to shake the hands of all the commissioners. And we kind of stopped that practice during COVID. Um, and I'd really love to reinstitute that because it's an opportunity for each of you to get, um, close and personal, get to shake the hands of these, uh, great commissioners we have that set the policy and, and let you all do the great work you do in this community. So, just wanted to start that back again. So when you come and get your certificate, start over here and you'll make your way around. Um, and they'll lean over and shake your hand. So, um, and then, uh, and we'll just get through this. It may take a little extra minute, but I think it's, it's nice and, uh, definitely worth the time. All right. So, without further ado, um, as we talked about, we get to recognize a lot of great, um, dedicated employees here today. We're gonna start 20 years of service. We're gonna start with the Aviation Department. How about we ask Monique Byrne to come on down? It looks like Mark is gonna join us with his Panther pen. Also from Aviation, Valerie Almeida. Think I know this next lady. She's probably got the best Funko collection I've ever seen in my life. 20 years of service from Aviation, Myra Lecuse. So Myra, how many Funkos do you have? They're over 300. Okay. All right. Let's stay with, actually, let's, let's move over to FASD, Finance Administrative Services, ETS, David Stenger. Oh, it's libraries.
I'm claiming them.
Oh, well, I've got a fast. All right, sorry. That was libraries. Human services, Dr. Dell Foy. That 20 years went quick, huh, doctor? Good morning. Congratulations. Think you know Dr. Campbell? Libraries, Rebecca Stanfield. Port Everglades, let's ask Earl Johnson to join us down here. I think we've got Glenn joining us as well. Glenn and Joe, here we are. They're running. Thank you. Congratulations. From Resilient Environment, Jeff De La Oyan. All right, from transit, how about we ask Theresa Antoine. Angelica, she's our deputy transit director. We're going to stay with transit for a couple more. How about we ask Mario Curtin to come join us? How about also in transit, Iowan Topa. Now we're going to switch over to 25 years of service, and we're going to start with aviation again. How about we ask Angela Scott to join us? Also from aviation, Michael Mateo. All right, let's see if we got this one correct. From FASD, RTT Susan Kluck. The gauntlet there. All right, human services, Reginald McNair. All right. Also from human service, Mariana Bitter. Want to get in here with everybody?
You want to do one first?
Want to do one by yourself first? Okay. Let's go back over to libraries, 25 years of service, Laura Amitrano. Want to stay with libraries for a couple more, Andra Mentor.
That's a fan club.
We'll do one with him.
We'll do one with him. Looks like we're going to need to go back here.
Also from libraries, Mark Garrick. So Mark, it's Garrick. Thank you. And I had a phonetic spelling that I think I mispronounced, so my apologies. All right. Also from libraries, William Forbes. Also from, no, this one's Parks.
Okay.
All right. Allison just likes to stand up here to celebrate all the employees here. I think we have maybe a couple more later, so don't get too comfortable. All right, so how about we ask our assistant Parks director, Eric Westberg, to come down? Well, they one with you, and then everyone can line up in the back. Our last one, under the 25 year celebration, is in transit. I'm going to ask Marjorie Gill to come join us. Before we get too far, much further along, if someone is here that had not RSVP'd, please make sure you go and raise your hand for a quick moment and come over here and check in so we make sure we don't miss you. Celebrating 30 years, celebrating 30 years of service to our great county, let's ask from FASD RTT Connie Gay to come join us. All right, we're going to go back to Parks, and we're going to ask Frank Mendola to join us. 30 years. All right, also from Parks, Stefan Gilbert, please. Come on, join us.
Steven Gilbert.
All right. Steven was trying to help me, and I messed up his attempt at help. All right. So from Public Works Water Waste Water, let's ask Patricia Mullings to join us. 30 years of service. All right, let's go over back to Resilient Environment, Luisa Ryder. Looks like you had a whole bunch. Let's go to the back. Let's go back. All right, we've got the last few recognitions for the day. Another 35 years of service from human services, Ruth Constant. All right, let's go in the back here for your photo. All right, let's go in the back here for your photo. All right, let's switch over to Public Works. How about we ask Eddie Grissette to come join us?
Thank you.
All right, our last two for the day. Let's ask Brenda McClary from Resilient Environment to come down.
Good morning.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
In celebrating 40 years of service, which we heard from earlier today and led us in the pledge, Ronnie Eaton from Public Works. Thank you again for your dedication and for the years of service to the county. Appreciate you all, thank you.
Once again, I just want to thank all our employees for all they do every day for all of us. With that, we have three proclamations today. And the first proclamation is to acknowledge Maternal Health Awareness Month. And it will be presented by Commissioners Alexandra Davis and Hazel Rogers to Shane Strum, Paula Thatchy, Monica King, Don Liberta, and Renee Podolsky. If you guys would please make your way to the podium. And Commissioner Davis is going to be remote, but Commissioner Rogers, when you're, it's time, if she'd like to say something, please ask her from down there, and that'd be great.
Good morning. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
We got over the exciting things, of course, recognizing our employees, and now it's another extension of what we like to do and should be doing. And my colleague, Commissioner Alexandra Davis, are you here? Can you hear me?
I can hear you, thank you so much for representing. And I know you're going to do an awesome job presenting that proclamation, and you're so deserving of that as well. Sorry I couldn't be there in person, but I'm there in spirit, and as you know, I'm virtual.
You're here because I can hear you, we can hear you, so we're proud to know that you're getting that voice back. You sound real good, right, Mark?
Yes, yes, thank you.
You almost said she looked good. Okay, we're going to... Okay, and before I read the proclamation, I really want to acknowledge the CEO of Broward Health. Shane, I don't know how you do it, and now you have Memorial Healthcare System also, so we're in good hands. We're going to be healthier because of Shane. Alina, thank you for being here. Maternal Health Awareness Month recognizes the importance of comprehensive care for mothers before, during, and after pregnancy, including both physical and mental health services. And whereas the United States Department of Health and Human Services Healthy People 2030 Initiative set a goal to reduce maternal death by 29.6% from 22.3 per 100,000 live births, okay, in 2022 to 15.7 by 2030, recognizing the health equity is critical to achieving this objective. And whereas, the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention report that Black women, regardless of income or education, are three times more likely to die from pregnancy-related complications than white women. And whereas, the National Center for Health Statistics report that in 2022, while maternal mortality and mortality rates decrease significantly for Black, non-Hispanic, white, non-Hispanic, and Hispanic women, the maternal mortality rate for Black women was higher than rates for white, Hispanic, Haitian women combined. Whereas, the Florida Department of Health reports that in 2023, the maternal mortality rate for Broward County was 24.8% compared to the state at 18.5. I'm going to repeat that. The Florida Department of Health report, that's the science. In 2023, the maternal mortality rate for Broward County was 24.8% compared to the state at 18.5. Whereas, the Association of American Medical Colleges note that 1 in 5 pregnant women experience mental health stressors that include anxiety, postpartum depression that can be reduced with adequate medical health services that greatly benefits the overall health of both mother and child. Whereas, Broward County Board of County Commissioners commend the community partnerships, Division Healthcare Services Section, and expresses gratitude and support for its maternal health providers and community partners for their forward-thinking approach to advance in equity, improve in outcomes, expanding access, and supporting the full spectrum of maternal care. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Broward County Board of County Commissioners that the board hereby designate May 2025 as Maternal Health Awareness Month in Broward County. And we have all of our providers and supporters, and I know you know everybody up here. But Commissioner Alexandra P. from Hazel P., you know I miss you, but I'm feeling your vibes, so ladies and gentlemen.
All right. Oh man, Commissioner, thank you.
You very, very much.
You want to talk about fashion first? Thank you for having us out here today, this is amazing. Mayor, Commissioners, thank you, thank you, thank you, this is phenomenal. But this woman is a champion for healthcare, for maternity care, for children, for her residents, for her constituents. She will burn your phone up night and day if somebody's not getting the right healthcare. Ask Malita and I, we get a lot of phone calls, but this is what we care about. But thank you to the county commission for supporting us, thank you for the people behind here. It couldn't be done without the Department of Health and so many others. What's really critical is, this is an important thing for our community. Senator Rich, Commissioner Rich, you know this better than anyone. You fought for this in the House, you fought for this in the Senate, and we have now delivered here in Broward County. It's truly amazing. You heard the numbers that Commissioner Rogers talked about? Those are bad numbers, but we're making a difference. When we originally set out on this pilot project and planned, we were told we would be lucky if we could help 150 to 200 mothers. But Commissioner Rogers and Commissioner Rich, really, Senator Rich said, you know what, we're going to make it happen, I know we can do better than that. You know how many we've already served in one year? Over 2,000 mothers that didn't have an OB-GYN or a primary care physician. So I can't thank you enough, Mayor, Commissioners, for doing what you do for our county, for supporting your two favorite healthcare systems, Broward Health and Memorial. So thank you for always being there for your community, your safety net healthcare providers of choice. Commissioner Bogan, we've done a lot with you and what you make happen in the community, especially on cardiac care. So we look forward to working more with you. I wanted to introduce Malita real quick, she doesn't need an introduction, she knows everybody, she's up all day and night worried about healthcare and making it better. But truly, Malita, I'm going to turn it over to you to say a few words, but just thank you to everybody here for making a difference in healthcare. Thank you.
Thank you. Not only we are concerned about our mothers, in these days, I was reading an article that says that in order to be able to ensure that mothers have a good outcome, you have to have a wraparound service. At Broward Health, we have not only what they call a centering program, that means that they have group therapy for these mothers, and also we have also our OB-GYN and our doctors, and frequent appointment and access. So we are using also our mobile van to be able to identify these women. We all talk about the first trimester. Do you know that women are not able to get medicated until after the first trimester? And the first trimester is critical. Broward Health and Memorial are now working with women in regards to making sure that even if the inability to pay, that we are taking care of them in the first trimester. So that is what Broward County, your support, there were two, over two safety nets, that's what we're doing for mothers in this community. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I know Commissioner Alexander's on the phone, but she's been a true champion, and you got an amazing staff, your county administrator, your deputy county administrator, Monica and Kim are there for us every step of the way. So your team has provided a lot of coverage for us, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Shane, you're not leaving, because when they leave your area, Malina, to my right, come on, how funny, you both in this together, right? Okay, so as we talk about healthcare, we know the providers, and when they leave your facility and that loving care that you guys provide, and they are home and need that support, and there's a nurse's aide or a CNA or whomever provide that service, we need to look into it to make sure those persons are being paid.
We do.
All right, so we'll talk about that, but I just want to put that on the table, that's where I'm coming in.
I told you, she doesn't stop, she's relentless.
I use every opportunity to engage. I thank you very much.
Thank you.
How about the team that's here, that it's a photo opportunity? Come on, we're going to have it. Come on, yeah. Thank you.
...
Okay, our next proclamation is for Jewish American Heritage Month, and it will be presented to Wendy Lipsitch, Evan Goldman, and Karen Zimmel, and by Senator Rich. Senator Rich, it's all yours.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Welcome to my friends here. Today, we are going to do a proclamation for Jewish American Heritage Month, and I want to just say that we've been doing it here for a little bit of time at the county, and I'm very proud of the fact that many of our cities are now doing it. I was at an event last night where Weston did it, and they had all the rabbis in our community come to speak, and members of synagogues and the whole community. And the whole thrust was that we all recognize the diversity in our county, and we strive to make it safe for everyone. So this proclamation falls into that category. Whereas, for 45 years, every president of the United States has declared a period of time for celebrating the contributions of the United States of the Jewish community's history, heritage, and culture. Since 2006, the month of May has been declared to be Jewish American Heritage Month pursuant to a bipartisan resolution of Congress that was introduced by Broward's own Congresswoman, Debbie Wasserman Schultz. And whereas, the United States observes Jewish American Heritage Month to encourage all Americans to learn about Jewish culture and pay tribute to the generations of Jewish Americans who have helped shape American history. Americans who have helped shape American history. And whereas with antisemitism on the rise in our country fueled by the spread of hatred, disinformation, and Holocaust distortion, Jewish American Heritage Month provides an opportunity to celebrate Jewish voices and bring together all of our communities in the fight against antisemitism and hate. And whereas Jewish Americans have made significant contributions to Broward County's economic development through entrepreneurship, business leadership, and innovation, playing a key role in building a thriving local economy, and whereas the Jewish community in Broward County has celebrated cultural institutions, has established cultural institutions, synagogues, and organizations that have enriched our religious, social, and cultural fabric while educating and serving the public, fostering dialogue and mutual understanding among groups, and promoting a welcoming, inclusive community for all residents. And whereas Jewish American Heritage Month reminds us Jewish history in America is the history of standing up for democracy, civil rights, and civil liberties, and American democracy requires Jewish safety, they are inseparable. And whereas from marching for civil rights to fighting for immigrant rights, workers' rights, religious freedom, and equal justice under the law, Jewish Americans have long understood that our liberation is bound up with the liberation of all. And whereas today, that legacy feels more urgent than ever, as we see both antisemitism on the rise and direct attacks on democracy, freedom, and civil rights, we honor our history by continuing to fight for a just, inclusive, and democratic America, and by building the partnerships and coalitions necessary to advance all of our rights and safety. Whereas recognizing and celebrating Jewish American Heritage Month reaffirms our state's commitment to combating prejudice, standing against antisemitism and all forms of hate, and promoting unity among all of Broward County's residents, now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board, Broward County Board of County Commissioners, that the Board hereby designates the month of May 2025 as Jewish American Heritage Month throughout Broward County, Florida, and encourages all residents to commemorate this occasion by appropriately celebrating the contributions of the Jewish community's history, heritage, and culture. And it's signed by our mayor, Beam Furr.
Thank you, Senator Rich, Mayor, and Commissioners. If you ask, I think any of us in the Jewish community what the best part of being in Broward County is, it's our diversity. And at the Jewish Community Relations Council of Broward County, I'm here with our chair, Karen Zimmel. I am Evan Goldman, and I'm privileged to be out in the community quite a bit because, as Senator Rich mentioned, we understand that our safety, Jewish safety, is inexplicably tied to the safety of all marginalized communities. So we're in the field, we're combating anti-black racism, Islamophobia, and we take that role seriously, and we do it every single day. So when we receive a proclamation that is uplifting the seismic contributions of Jewish Americans, it's very affirming, and it fuels our passion for continuing this work. Yes, antisemitism is on the rise, but it's part of my job. It is my job to know what's happening around these United States. And thanks to you, Commissioners, thanks to Monica and Kim, who are always here for us, the Jewish community on the professional side. I can affirm to you today that Broward County is the finest place to live, work, and play Jewishly in America, and with that, I say thank you and give you my friend Wendy Lipsick from AJC.
Thank you, Evan. And I just want to say that Wendy is here representing American Jewish Committee. You remember that we helped sponsor, and we're doing it again this year, a hall symposium on antisemitism, which was amazingly attended across the community. It's exactly what we were talking about in the resolution, and Wendy is the one that's in charge of special projects for American Jewish Committee. And many of you remember that our friend, former Congressman Ted Deutsch, is now the National Director of Overall of American Jewish Committee Worldwide, so welcome.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. I'm Wendy Lipsick. I'm here with one of our board members, Catherine Mandell. I just want to, I thank you all. These are, this is a great team, and we all work as partners, and we really couldn't do this without all of you. I do want to say many of the cities in Broward County have been doing these proclamations as well, but it all started right here with all of you. And again, thank you so much to Kim and Monica, to all of our friends on the Commission Board who have been so supportive, have gone that extra step as to award grant, award funds so that we can combat antisemitism as a community with community partners such as yourself. So as Nan pointed out, we will be hosting another antisemitism summit coming up in the fall. I will include you, all of you with all the details, and hopefully you and your constituents can attend. But thank you from the bottom of our hearts. We are so appreciative and look forward to continuing to work together.
Nan, can I just say to Wendy, you and Ted do such a great job, and I want to thank you for everything you guys do for the community.
Thank you, Mark, so much.
And our last proclamation for the day is going to be proclamation for Research Park at Florida Atlantic University Day, and it's going to be presented to Andrew S. Duffel, who is the president of the Research Park at FAU, and Imran Siddiqui, vice president of the Research Park at FAU, and Maggie Gunther. And anybody else that wanted to?
I think we have, do we have another board member here? Who do we have? Come on up.
Looks like we have a bunch.
Val Torres.
Okay, Val Torres, and whoever else.
Anybody here from the Research Park.
Thank you all for being here. It's all yours, Michael.
Thank you. Whereas the Research Park at Florida Atlantic University was created in 1985 by Palm Beach County, Broward County, and FAU, the Research Park was created to promote scientific research and development and affiliation with FAU to foster economic development and broaden the economic base of Broward and Palm Beach Counties. Whereas the Research Park contributed meaningfully to FAU's achievement of the Carnegie Community Engagement Classification in 2020 and Very High Research Activity R1 Designation in 2025. Whereas the Research Park has earned industry recognition for its achievements from the International Economic Development Council, Florida Economic Development Council, International Business Innovation Association, and Florida Business Incubator Association. Whereas innovation activities taking place at the Research Park added $708 million to Broward and Palm Beach Counties' economy while creating 160 jobs in addition to the 978 already supported by the Research Park in 2024. Whereas the economic impact of the activities at the Research Park is expected to contribute $4.8 billion in personal income and 4,600 direct jobs over the next five years. Whereas the Research Park is an integral asset to Broward County's future technological growth and success, now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of Broward County Commissioners that the Board designates May 15, 2025, as Research Park at FAU Appreciation Day in celebration of 40 years of innovation in Broward County, and it's signed by Mayor Beam Furr. And I'm going to present this to the president, Andrew Duffel, who is a friend and a great guy.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Udine, and to all of the Commissioners. As you heard, I'm joined by my vice chair, Imran Siddiqui, Maggie Gunther, and Val Torres, who are all members of the governing authority, as well as my team members, Ryan Lilly and Abby Sears, who for many, many years, 40 years across the Research Park now, have been adding innovation to this economy, to this county through various activities. It's often forgotten and not talked about as much as it should be that we do have a campus in Broward County in Deerfield Beach, which houses our largest employer with 300 employees, adding a great deal of economic energy to the county. And many of the employees who work in Boca Raton are based here in Broward County and come home every day here. We're very much looking forward to working with Florida Atlantic University and the county in the future, particularly on the ocean economy, and aim to be much more present in downtown and the surrounding cities in Broward County so that we can bring new innovations, new entrepreneurs, and new jobs to this community. I want to thank Commissioner Udine in particular for always being very supportive of us and our work. We were able to recognize his contributions a couple of years ago as our distinguished leader for the Research Park at FAU. Commissioner Bogan has always been a great supporter, as well as Commissioner Furr, Mayor Furr, as well as the whole, Commissioner as a whole, and obviously your county administrator, Monica Shapiro, and her deputy, Kim, are fantastic supporters of everything we do and try to facilitate all of our work. So we're very grateful. We'll continue to do as much as we possibly can to make this an innovative place to work and bring more entrepreneurs and international business. So thank you.
Now we have to do a picture because that's our whole room, we have pictures.
This is not that Imran Siddiqui. This is a different Imran Siddiqui.
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor? Is it time to go home yet?
I think so. Our work here is done. Okay, now we can actually get going. We are going to start by reading the Tuesday Morning Memo. With the reading, Clark, please proceed.
Broward County Board of County Commissioners, May 20, 2025, Tuesday Agenda Memorandum. The following are submitted for your consideration. Consent items are 1 through 45. Public hearing items are 46 through 51. Regular items are 52 through 59. I request the following withdrawals or other modifications to the agenda and note the following additional information. Withdrawals, deferrals, none. Other modifications, items 5, 8, and 14, signature pages have been received. Item 7. The Board's consideration of item 7 is based upon the item including the revised motion statements as amended by Additional Material Number 7A submitted by the County Attorney's Office. The agreement forms included in item 7 incorporate Scrivner's Error Corrections that are being presented for ratification by the Town of Davie on May 21. Item 29. The Board's consideration is based upon the item as revised by the amended motion statement as shown in Additional Material Number 29A submitted by the County Attorney's Office. Items 32 and 33, the Board's consideration of items 32 and 33 is based upon the items with the corrections shown on the additional page of Scrivner's Errors. Item number 55, this item is sponsored by Commissioner Hazel P. Rogers. Move to consent. Item 54 and 57 be moved to consent. Additional material, items 1A and B, board appointments, item 7A, revised motion statement submitted by the Office of the County Attorney, item 29A, revised motion, excuse me, revised language for motion A submitted by the Office of the County Attorney.
Okay, thank you very much. With that, I'll take any polls from the consent agenda. We'll start with Commissioner Rogers. No polls?
No, sir.
No polls? No? Nope?
I just want to poll number 33 for a comment.
33? Oops. Commissioner Fisher, McKenzie?
No, sir.
Any from the public? Commissioner Davis, any polls?
No.
Okay, good. Okay, so with that, if the county attorney would say what we've got going here.
Thank you, Mayor. The consent agenda today consists of items 1 through 45 minus item 33, and then added to the consent agenda are items 54 and 57.
Mayor, I move the approval of the consent agenda as read by the county attorney.
We have a motion from Senator Geller and a second from Commissioner Udine. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. With that, we are going to, let's go to item 33. Senator Rich?
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to just make a comment because I just want not only those of us sitting up here, but people out in the audience and listening to recognize the incredible work that's being done on affordable housing by this county. And these are eight projects here in item number 33, and it's all done with, you know, with gap financing to help make these viable options, and they're all across the county, four large, four smaller developments, you know, 400 unit, and then four smaller. There is one for homes, individual homes. You know that, how difficult that is, but we're still working hard on that to make sure that wherever possible, we can, we can have single-family homes. So it's just to me, just an indication of the direction of this board and our, and our incredible Ralph Stone, who heads our housing finance, who tries to make anything work, and I think in this case, he has. And I just want to thank all the staff that has been involved with this, and I want to particularly thank the county attorney because the attorneys have to be involved in all of this, and we have additional attorneys, and we just, we, it's like a can-do. We're doing it, and we're making a difference, and I just wanted to recognize that. Thank you.
And I'm glad you did because it is worth celebrating. I went to two ribbon cuttings this week. Both of them are amazing projects, one in Hollywood and one in Dania, and they're just kind of, they keep coming. And, and I think it's indicative of how hard we're trying, and that's good. So with that, would I?
Take a motion, yes.
I'll take, have a motion from Senator Rich, and a second from Commissioner Rogers. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Not opposed, Mayor. Just want to thank you too on Channel 10. You said our, our main focus here is affordable housing. You touted that on Channel 10, so I want to thank you for always keeping that in mind. Thank you.
Yep. Well, I think, I think it shows in what we've been doing. Okay, with that, we have, again, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Commissioner Davis, let me make sure. Yes?
Yes, yes, absolutely. Thank you.
Okay, that does pass unanimously. With that, we're going to go to the public hearing. We'll start with item 46.
The public hearing on item 46 is now open. Item 46 is a motion to adopt resolution granting renewal of a non-exclusive unrestricted Port Everglades Marine Terminal Security Services franchise to Port Everglades Terminal LLC for a new five-year term. One member of the public has signed up to speak on the item, and that is Lorenzo Robertson.
Mayor, that was an error. He's no longer.
One member of the public has signed up to speak on the item, and that is Lorenzo Robertson.
Mayor, that was an error. He's no longer here.
He's not? Okay.
Move it. Second.
Okay, we have a motion from Vice Mayor Bogan and a second from Commissioner Udine. Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Commissioner Davis?
No, I'm not opposed.
Okay. That passes unanimously. Item 47?
The public hearing on Item 47 is now open. Item 47 is a motion to adopt resolution granting renewal of a non-exclusive unrestricted Port Everglades vessel bunkering services franchise to Starfleet, Inc. for a new five-year term.
Move it. Second.
Were there any, anybody wanting to speak at all?
No members of the public have signed up to speak on the item.
Okay. With that, I'll take a motion. We have a motion from Vice Mayor Bogan, a second from Senator Geller. Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
Okay, that passes unanimously. Item 48?
The public hearing on Item 48 is now open. Item 48 is a motion to adopt resolution granting renewal of a non-exclusive unrestricted Port Everglades cargo handler services franchise to Sun Terminals, Inc. for a new 10-year term. No member of the public has signed up to speak on the item.
Move approval.
We have a motion from Senator Geller, a second from Vice Mayor Bogan. Any discussion? All those in favor? Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Item 49?
The public hearing on Item 49 is now open. Item 49 is a motion to adopt resolution granting renewal of a non-exclusive unrestricted Port Everglades stevedore services franchise to Sun Terminals, Inc. for a new 10-year term. No member of the public has signed up to speak on the item.
Move it. Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Fisher, is that right? And a second from who?
Bogan.
From Vice Mayor Bogan. All those in favor? Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Item 50?
The public hearing on Item 50 is now open. Item 50 is a motion to adopt resolution pertaining to the Broward Addiction Recovery Division, amending various chapters of the County Administrative Code to update the name. No member of the public has signed up to speak on this item.
Move it. Second.
We have a motion from Vice Mayor Bogan, a second from Senator Rich, and I just want to say, we've been, we've been calling this Bark forever, and were we supposed to be calling it Bard?
No, Bark has been okay.
Okay, all right. So, now it is officially Bark. Very good. Okay, all those in favor? Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Okay, last one, 51.
Our final public hearing item is Item 51. The public hearing on Item 51 is now open. Item 51 is a motion to enact ordinance pertaining to the sale of appointments for certain public services, creating Section 21-5 and amending Section 8 1/2-16 of the County Code of Ordinances. No member of the public has signed up to speak on the item.
Okay. Let's get a motion first.
I'll move it.
I have a motion from Commissioner Udine, a second from Commissioner Rogers. Discussion?
Yeah, I just want to ask counsel what this ordinance means.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Let's.
Let me share with my colleagues. Who has not been following, what we had was, I call them pirates, you can call them anything. They go out, scalpers, you know, they go out and they make appointments to go to the Department of Motor Vehicles to do whatever, and they were selling these appointments to validate your drivers. That's the one. Okay? Still need me to talk about it? And we are just trying to follow the lead, take the lead from Miami-Dade County, and we're still waiting, as Drew would say, the Governor's Office. We don't know what they're going to do because they two were negotiating and talking about this item, and there's a, you know, policy that's coming.
It's going to make it so we can sell them, right?
I'm not going there with you, but we know what was happening, and it was not fair, it's not right, and this will temper that movement of making reservation and selling appointments. Okay? Thank you.
Good idea. Okay, with that, all those in favor? Any opposed? Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
Okay, that passes unanimously. That concludes the public hearing. We will now go to Item 52, Aviation. Mark Geller?
Item 52 is a motion to approve Fifth Amendment to the Agreement between Broward County and Sunshine Cleaning Services LLC for janitorial services for Broward County's Fort Lauderdale-Hollywood International Airport, Terminals 1, 2, 3, and 4, and the Airport Operations Control Center to extend the agreement on a month-to-month basis through July 31st, 2026, unless earlier terminated by the Director of Purchasing. No member of the public has signed up to speak on this item.
Okay.
Move approval. Second.
We have a motion from Senator Geller and a second from Commissioner McKenzie, County Administrator.
Thank you. Just very briefly, I was asked during briefings to make a comment about this item, and I just wanted to make sure the Commission had comfort. This item, this solicitation started, you know, well over a month, a year ago, and the reason that we're on a month-to-month, I just want to make sure we put on the record, there were over 20, I had it here in a minute ago, we had over 20, how many? 21 offers, vendors that applied for this, over 154 questions and a number of site visits that were requested of us to walk around the airport and look at this. So, it took a little bit longer to get here, but the good, very good news about this is that there's a lot of competition and a lot of interest in this. So, it's a good news story, even though you have a month-to-month, so I just wanted to share that.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Commissioner Rogers?
Okay, just wanted to thank Monica for remembering and reminding me that was a question I asked, when, month-to-month, and why? So, that's a good reason. There are many that's interested, and we have to do it the right way. So, thanks for that.
Competition, the competition's good. All those in favor? Any opposed? Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
Okay, that passes unanimously. We'll go to Item 53. Thank you. Item 53?
Item 53 is a motion to approve final ranking of qualified firms for requests for proposals. RFP number PNCT 2128678P1, Engineering Services for District 3A's System Fire Flow Improvements for Water and Wastewater Services. The ranked firms are Chenmore and Associates, Inc. is number one, and number two is Thompson and Associates, Inc., Civil Engineering. Five members of the public have signed up for this item. The first speaker is Bernie Friedman, and followed by Mark Stemplar.
Okay. Bernie? You have the floor.
Thank you very much, Mayor and Commission. We urge you to approve the final ranking. First of all, this is for fire safety. Important project.
At the airport, the RFP was issued on August of 2024. One year later, by the way, we're still here, absolutely no fault of purchasing or county staff. They did an excellent job at moving this forward. Unfortunately, as you read in the backup, there are 13 exhibits, lots of back-and-forth letters, objections, protests, interveners, professional standards, all deny, 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 deny. It's been fully aired, it's been litigated. We don't want to relitigate a million issues before you today. We urge you to approve it. Basically, there was an allegation of a cone of silence violation. Broward County has a professional standards department. The professional standards department did a full review, and on April 3rd, 2025, said at no point, at no point did Chenmore discuss its proposal with an RFP with any member of the Broward County Environmental Permitting Division. Chenmore did not communicate with a person prohibited in the cone of silence. That was issued by the, by your professional standards after a full and thorough evaluation. The County Attorney's Office was also involved, along with many people in purchasing. Second issue, we changed our proposal. That is totally ridiculous. The proposal relates to a pipeline installation. Chenmore rightfully continued to refine and explore options to do different types of installations during the, during the month or two between the, when the proposal was submitted and the presentation. At no point did the methodology change, did the installation of the pipe change as to the place, did the connection change? And again, your County Attorney's Office, your purchasing staff, WWS, all of the various staff looked at this, carefully reviewed it, and determined that there was absolutely no change in the proposal. Any good firm is going to continue to refine things and make something better as the process goes forward, and that's what Chenmore was doing. They rolled up their sleeves. Finally, there's some crazy argument about transparency is bad. I think transparency is really good. One of the things that this County Commission has always called for is transparency. You have an RFP, RLI repository. I commend the purchasing department. It's one of the best in the state. We do this all over the state. There's no more transparent process than Broward County, and, you know, I think that's a good thing. Everyone has free access to it. It's open access, you know, so everyone can participate in it. Finally, there's nothing arbitrary, there's nothing capricious about the process, nothing, you know, except 13 exhibits, 13 letters, objections, protests, that took almost a year, sadly, to get through, and, you know, I would also finally note that there was no protest or administrative hearing. Typically, you know, if someone is aggrieved, they go to a hearing officer when they know their case is, you know, relatively good and they have a shot, you know, I think they even admit that they, you know, didn't go to a hearing officer on this. So, we urge you to approve the ranking, and thank you very much. Bye.
Thank you, Bernie. Next speaker is?
The next speaker is Mark Stemplar, followed by Peter Moore.
Good morning, Mark.
Good morning. Mark Stemplar with the Becker Firm, also on behalf of Chenmore, and I have the pleasure of working with Bernie. Yeah, I won't repeat what he said, just briefly. I think it is significant that Thompson has decided not to pursue an appeal. I think that's reflective of its lack of confidence in its arguments, and it's raised many arguments over the last several months, as Bernie mentioned, objecting, protesting, all have been completely refuted by Chenmore, all have been resoundly denied by the purchasing division. So, we would ask that you just proceed with Chenmore. This was a fair and just process. There's no reason to overturn the evaluation of this ranking. None has been presented. Chenmore played by the rules, and we look forward to working with Broward County on this important project. Thank you. And I'm here for questions on legal issues if needed.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Stemplar. Next?
The next speaker is Peter Moore, followed by Joseph Goldstein.
Good morning, Peter.
How you all doing today?
Good.
Mayor, Commissioners, County Administrator, and staff. My name is Peter Moore, and I'm the President and CEO of Chenmore and Associates. Many of you remember Dr. Ben Chen, our founder and still the Chairman of our Board. Nearly 40 years ago, he founded our business here in Broward County, and his long service to this county, his long service to this county included many years on the Board that is now known as Career Source Broward. I have also personally interacted with many of you in my roles in the Leadership Broward Foundation, the Broward Workshop, but it doesn't just stop with Ben and I. As part of our, our staff logged over 2,500 service hours on the way to winning the Business of the Year this year for the South Florida Business Journal in our revenue category. We frequently host K through 12 students in our offices to show the benefit of STEM careers. We frequently do pro bono work for nonprofits, including the brand-new science building at St. Mark's Episcopal School that just had its groundbreaking this morning. It's good to see you, Commissioner. I was born in Broward County. My headquarters company in Broward County, and I'm raising my daughter in the home I own in Broward County. Broward County is home to Chenmore. It's important to Chenmore, and it's important to Peter Moore. Chenmore is also important to Broward County. A firm that started out as a CBE is today the largest engineering firm headquartered in Broward County, based in the South Florida Business Journal and Engineering News Record. We have over 50 staff in our headquarters and over a $5 million payroll out of that office, making significant economic impact. I'm very sorry this project was delayed because our competitor protested. We've never protested a project in Broward County, including the last time when the same competitor beat us for the general services contract we were the incumbent for. Protesting is a precious waste of resources. As Bernie mentioned, the bottom line is this solicitation has been carefully reviewed by county staff, professional standards, and others. All have concluded again, the objection, protest, and allegation of the cone of silence has no merit. We won fair and square. Broward County has always had a very transparent process. Thank you for your time and consideration today. We're getting ready to get back to what we do best, providing high-quality service to the most important client that we have, Broward County. Thank you.
The next speaker is Joseph Goldstein, followed by James Thompson.
Mr. Mayor, may we switch our order and let my client go first? He's the speaker after me. Thank you. Mr. Thompson?
Thank you very much for your time. Good morning. My name is Jim Thompson. I've been doing projects for Broward County since 1996. I was actually Ben Chen's first employee, but I started a local CBE firm here in Broward County. We have 15 employees, and yet we still compete against much larger firms as a prime on Broward County projects. On a recent RFP on today's agenda, we competed against Chenmore and Associates. After reviewing Chenmore's presentation, I was shocked at what I saw and heard. Chenmore presented lies about my firm, exaggerated facts about their firm, and coordinated with Broward County staff during the cone of silence to actually get a permit for this project. If that does not violate the cone of silence, what does? But the most egregious violation I think they did was they downloaded my RFP from the solicitation website and changed their submitted design to match my design. The handout you can see, they did not propose horizontal directional, or they proposed horizontal directional drill under I-95, 595, and under two culverts. After looking at my design, they changed all four of those. The importance here is I was going to save the county with my creative approach, nearly half of the budget would have been saved with my approach, and they copied it to win. So, I have three requests for you guys today. One, please review the procurement code and do not allow the full post, or RFP to be posted until after the selection process, so this cannot happen again. Number two, please clarify the cone of silence ordinance to state who can be contacted at the county, because I abide by the cone of silence, I didn't contact anyone. And number three, please do the right thing, either disqualify Chenmore from this RFP or re-advertise it. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Goldstein?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, County Administrators, County Attorney, Joe Goldstein from Shuts and Bowen, here on behalf of Thompson Associates. You heard Mr. Thompson very eloquently summarize some of the issues that we had. I want to talk a little bit about the process and then emphasize one of those. First of all, as we all know, and maybe folks in the audience or listening might not understand, there's a cone of silence in place, and so that prevents my client or who didn't have a lobbyist for this procurement from talking to any of you. And while we filed a protest with Mr. Gleason, we decided not to go to the next level to the hearing officer, partly because of time, partly because of cost, and because, as I explained to my client, you will have an opportunity to express your views and to make a pitch for why this procurement should be either redone or an award to my client. What I want to emphasize as one of the three issues, the procurement issue that Mr. Thompson mentioned, first of all, you all know me, I've spoken to you a lot about procurement over time, definitely not against transparency, but there's a disconnect when we do oral presentations, and that disconnect greatly impacted Thompson and Associates here, because there is a partial exemption, a temporary exemption, under the public records law and under the sunshine law. So, when you're going to have oral presentations, there is an exemption from public records and then the sunshine law. That's why we exclude participants from listening in in other people's presentations. But the county publishes prior to that exemption in their, in their database. So, what happens here is the purpose between keeping that exemption and not allowing people to observe someone else's presentation is because while oral presentations are supposed And so what we believe happened here, because our solution was in the database, they were able to, as, as Mr. Friedman said, refine and explore, excuse me, refine, yeah, refine, refine and explore different ways to, uh, change their solution that mimicked ours. We believe they copied ours. They're, they're saying that they just refined and explored. So my suggestion to you, if you, even if you don't want to redo this procurement, is in the future, when we're going to have oral presentations, that the solicitation should not be uploaded until oral presentations are complete, matching it with excluding people from their oral presentations themselves. Cure that disconnect. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Goldstein. Okay. Um, County Attorney, do you want to weigh in on this at all?
I don't, you know, there were three things that they're asking for, or seem to be asking for. The first two I think are worth looking at, which is, uh, there's a policy decision that can be made as to whether there's, uh, this information is basically, there's an exemption as was mentioned, as to whether it's, it's held privately for a certain period of time. It actually wouldn't, I don't think because of the timing here have impacted, uh, the outcome because of, it took more than the 30 days that it would have been able to be exempted. I think we can look at the cone of silence. I, I know this was looked at. Uh, everything that, uh, that Mr. Friedman said is, is accurate. People looked at it and this was affirmed, uh, at every level. Uh, so I think we can look at the code to see if there's anything that can be clarified in there so that everyone's on a level playing field. But we did rewrite it not that long ago. It is very expansive, uh, but you know, you can always relook at it and make sure that it's fair and it can be interpreted objectively. The third thing, uh, I, I disagree with in terms of what they're asking, uh, and it's, it's really just because my function is as a lawyer, uh, not as a policymaker. The Board obviously has a different role and staff has a different role than I have. Uh, if, if they wanted to have this thrown out or revisited, where they think that they had strong legal arguments to do so, and I think this was also mentioned, I think it was incumbent upon them to seek an independent appeal of it. Our, our code provision changed not that long ago. Vice Mayor Bogan, I think you, uh, directed this and the Board accepted it. To move away from our own hearing officers and to have DOA hearing officers, the perception was they'd be more independent or less deferential to the county. They're available to review these things for reasons that Mr. Goldstein, who's also very, you know, credible, mentioned, uh, they decided not to, to pursue it. Uh, so I think we can look at things for future process. My recommendation would be not to touch or disturb this, but rather to approve the item. Uh, but that's just my opinion, doesn't make it, uh, right, and I'm happy to answer further questions.
Thank you. County Administrator, do you have any one to weigh in with, or Mr. Gleason?
No, I, I think, you know, Drew summarized it well. Um, our purchasing staff, uh, we all feel that everything was done, uh, properly on, on this solicitation. If there's additional guidance for future, um, policy direction you guys would like us to do as far as posting or things like that, uh, we certainly can, certainly can look at that. Additionally, I wanted to, uh, share, um, you know, we are in the middle of a procurement process, um, review with an outside, uh, firm, um, and, and I know that they've reached out to your offices to make sure, um, uh, if you, there's anything you would like to add to that, uh, conversation, um, so, so be on the lookout for that because that might be some things that you want to talk about process, uh, that could be helpful as they go through, and they've met with all of our departments already. And, and so we're doing a deeper dive on, on how to make sure we're the most efficient that we can be, um, in the procurement code, given the, the, the parameters around the procurement code that exists today.
Okay. Thank you. With that, I will entertain a motion before we have discussion. Who, did you move it? A motion by Commissioner Fisher and second by Commissioner McKenzie. With that, I have on the Q, Senator Geller, and then Vice Mayor Bogan. Senator Geller.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, Mr. Myers, I understand that you're the lawyer, we're the policymakers, but I'm going to wear both hats because I do. That's just what I do. So first question, um, there was a statement about there having been an investigation. I'd like you to elaborate on that because, again, an allegation of a violation of the cone of silence is a serious allegation. Can you explain to me exact, I presume there's still a cone since I haven't heard from anybody from either side? So I assume, um, that, well, they've said that there was, uh, an allegation and that there was an investigation. Can you give us in just a little bit, not chapter verse, but a little more detail, what allegation there was of a violation of the cone, plus what the county investigation showed on that?
I, I can, Senator, just generally, there may be somebody here who may be from professional standards who could provide more specifics, but my understanding of it is that the cone remains in effect on this, and it's very limited who you were able to speak with to discuss the solicitation itself. A question was asked of somebody that may have technically been within the cone, uh, I believe, but, but the conversation wasn't directly about the solicitation, it was about seeking a permit, uh, you know, which you can argue that that's somehow tangentially related to the solicitation, uh, but I, I don't know if, I, I did read the backup in here. I know that it was denied, uh, and I, I'm not, I don't believe that there was prejudice from it in this instance.
So without needing to know the exact facts, the exact allegation that was made was investigated by county and found to be without merit?
Yes.
Okay.
That is correct. In the backup, I believe there was, um, an overview of that professional standards report. Um, we're pulling it up right now, but I believe it was exhibit two or three or something like that. And for the sign.
I'll accept County Attorney's Statement. Second question is, there was discussion about when, um, when we should be posting these. My understanding is state law requires that they be posted at, within a certain time period. I think it's 30 days. Is that correct?
Yeah, yes.
I heard a reference to 30 days.
So I don't, I, I don't know if they ever have to formally be posted. The, the posting is done just for transparency and efficiency purposes. What the state law speaks about is in terms of when it's a public record, uh, and, and what it says is there's an exemption, and that's important. It's not confidential, it's exempt. If we're confidential, then during this period, let's use 30 days as one of the time parameters, then we could not release the information because it's confidential. If it's exempt, then we don't have to release it, uh, but we can release it. Uh, so we're dealing with an exemption here. Uh, I, I can understand the policy points on, on each side of it, uh, and they could be evaluated, but we, we acted consistently with the law here.
Okay. Has anybody in, from our, from the county evaluated whether or not they believe that Chenmore did, um, copy what TNA, I assume it's Thompson and Associates, what Thompson and Associates did, or was, was that ever examined?
Yes, it was, uh, it was part of, of a timely, uh, and, you know, well-stated objection that was denied, and then a subsequent protest that was also denied. It could have been the subject of an appeal before an independent hearing officer. The decision was made not to seek that, and I, and I completely understand why they decided not to seek it, uh, but it's been reviewed. The standard is very, very deferential, uh, to the county and to county staff in reviewing that. It's essentially an arbitrariness standard, uh, and could, could somebody have seen it another way? Possibly, uh, but that's not the standard with arbitrariness. The standard is was.
Of course.
Yeah. So, so, so I don't believe that, that the decision in rejecting the protest was arbitrary.
Okay. And my last question is, um, I do understand, having done appeals, the cost of them, and I fully understand, uh, why one might choose not to, but is a failure to seek an appeal, does that bar something that, under a failure to exhaust administrative remedies?
Yeah, I mean, I litigated these, these cases years ago, and I don't think the law's changed, and I'll look at my folks, but yes, I believe it is still failure to exhaust an administrative remedy, and then it effectively, uh, bars a, a direct challenge to that. Uh, yes, go further review.
Okay. Uh, and as I said, and I don't think it's necessary to repeat, I've not spoken with either party on this.
And, and may I, may I just say one more thing? What, what, uh, what Mr. Goldstein, you know, stated is, is also fair and true, that there is a process for the Board. The Board does have the ability to do something different if it wanted. I think staff's recommending that you not do it, and certainly I'm recommending that you not do it, but they're, they're not here for an improper purpose today. They're here pointing out something that they find problematic that frankly, I, I think, and we're going to look at it as lawyers and we'll coordinate with purchasing and Monica to make sure, I know you all want the process to be very transparent. That was actually part of the problem here, maybe too transparent, uh, and you also want it to be fair. So, so there is some, uh, action steps after this that we can take to make sure the procurement code is as strong as possible.
Thank you, County Attorney. Uh, Vice Mayor Bogan.
I just have a quick question to Monica and Drew. So if somebody is bidding on anything, forget this, any RFP, is there, is it possible that, um, a competitor can see someone else's filings, um, before, at any time, even before the oral argument, the oral presentation is made?
So at the time that the bid is, is closed, let's say it's, it closes at five, five o'clock on a Monday, no one can see anything until that, after that time, and no other submittals are, are able to be received from the county, by the county.
But there was a comment made that, that, that someone could see it before their oral argument.
That's correct. So.
So let me stop you. Nobody should be able to see anything before any oral argument. It's not fair.
Well.
And so I don't care who it is, and I, you know, I, I don't know how you guys feel about it, but if I'm going to bid against you, or you're going to bid against me, you shouldn't see what.
Don't you bid against me?
Well, you shouldn't have to see what, what we're all doing until the argument is done. So how do we stop that?
So, so under Florida law, there's a provision, and Drew can talk about it probably more articulately than I, since it's about the law. However, what I will tell you is, there's only a 30-day kind of window that is, I guess, protected under Florida law. If there is a public records request that is made of the county, there's a 30-day window. Oftentimes, because there's several evaluation committees and whatnot, it doesn't happen within that 30-day period. So even if it happened on the 31st day or beyond, from Florida law, we are required to disclose. So, so, you know, there's only a 30-day window where arguably, uh, and it's permissive, it's not saying that we would have to cloak that information for those first 30 days. It says that if we get our public records request, we can withhold releasing that for that 30-day period.
Can a competitor though, vying for something, but can they hold back and then release, you know, like, let's say I know you're going to want to pull everything I'm going to talk about beforehand, so I'm going to hold stuff back. Can I hold stuff back and I won't get penalized by, you know, the county if I want to hold something back? Like this gentleman is saying, he did some unique drawing or unique solution, I should say, unique solution. Can I hold that back until my oral argument, even though I didn't put it down in writing? Or am I going to be disqualified for that?
Drew, if you want to?
So, so the, the answer essentially is no. Uh, I mean, I can explain it in more detail, but when you submit, so, and first of all, you know, you and I orally argue sometimes, when I was a, before I became county attorney, I used to be the Chief Appellate Counsel, I'd argue a lot, and you know, you always saw basically what, what the other side had, right? It wasn't trial by ambush, you basically had information on it. What prevents you, what, what is supposed to keep it fair, is there's a prohibition on you materially changing what you've presented, uh, you know, between the time you submit it in writing and then when you get to the, the oral presentation of it. And, and here, the allegation was that they did materially change it, the finding was that they didn't for reasons that purchasing staff can probably best explain, but I also, I understand them as well. So, so that's what, again, it may make sense to shield this information for 30 days after bid opening, and you can do that, so if the process moves quickly enough, you can get to oral presentations before anybody sees it. That, that is a possibility, uh, but the main protection that you have under Florida law to keep this fair is you have restrictions on being able to basically bait and switch, uh, submit something and then, and then later materially campaign on something.
Again, something I'm going to bring up at another date, I think we should look at maybe, uh, within 30 days, then the oral argument can happen. I just want to have a fair, I think it's only proper that we have a fair process and that nobody is, you know, I'm not saying it happened here. I'm just saying, if it's possible that that can happen, we should put a stop to it and figure out a way that we could have oral arguments within that 30-day period. That's all. Uh, and I'll bring it up, I'll talk to you about an agenda item.
Yeah. I think what this has done is has exposed a little vulnerability in this process, to your point. And I think, I think what, what we probably want to do is take a, another look at it to shield, um, that information, to make it, make sure that it's fair, but given the way, what the law is right now and what we've, our policy, um, I think we're probably going to have to go forward with this, the way we, the way it is, or at least that's what I'm, if I'm reading the room right. But I do think it would be worth, maybe you give us some suggestions at, at a later time, how this could be, uh, I think, I think Mr. Goldstein's ideas and proposals are, are merited, have some merit, that, that would be worth, worth taking a look at. With that, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
This passes unanimously. Okay. Thank you. Uh, with that, we will go to item 55, and?
Item 55 is a motion to discuss Broward's policy and long-term plans regarding the incorporation of unincorporated areas of Broward County. No member of the public has signed up to speak on this item.
Commissioner Rogers, was this yours?
That's mine, and I'm going to be brief.
Okay.
I'm using my memory here to speak to an item that I recall from way back when, when Broward County wanted every area within the county to be annexed, and I haven't heard that conversation in years, so I just wanted to know, is that a policy decision that was taken that where we are today is good, and we are no longer seeking to, um, have those annexation, those areas annexed?
And I guess my question, you're asking kind of for some of the historical knowledge on this, right?
Historical?
Who started that idea?
Okay.
I'm, I'm going to guess.
I'm not ready for you yet. I knew he was going to chime in, all right?
I'm sure.
So it's just a question, I know that, um, these areas are in my colleague's district.
Right.
But it is a Broward County decision, so I'm just asking a question, not telling us what to do. I just wanted to know what our policies and how did we come to this decision? Is everything good? I'm seeing us spending dollars in the, those areas, and I'm saying, oh my God, that's good stuff we're doing. We're improving the area as a county, and the, the area should be more attractive to the cities, so we can also get that done, because we have improved those areas. We have been good leaders for those communities, and just wondered what the policy is and how did we come to that decision?
Let me ask, I'm going to go to County Administrator first on this. If you have any historical background on this?
I do have historical background, um, and certainly I, I know, um, you know, I've spoken with each of you individually, uh, during the briefings in the last week and a half about, about this item, and we've talked about, a little bit about the history. So for the benefit of the public, um, what I will share is, I guess it was early 2000s was the beginning of, of really, um, what we now know as, um, the, the, the major effort for Broward County to be the most incorporated county in the state of Florida, um, with the least amount of unincorporated area, um, of any other county. So we, we have roughly 16,000 residents, um, in the unincorporated area, almost, almost exactly within 100 individuals split between, um, a central county and Broadview, um, and then there's about 500 residents up in, um, the northern part of the county, um, in a, in a separate, um, small pocket in, uh.
And what was the thinking behind that of, why this is a good idea?
So, so at the time, at the time, the, the conversation, because I actually sat up in Tallahassee in the Governor's Office reviewing these, these proposals statewide, and, and I found it interesting at the time that Broward wanted to do this, it, it was an interesting concept because the idea was that, that municipalities would be, um, in the best position to govern and, and watch out for municipal type of services. Now, as we know, um, you know, we, obviously now, uh, in Broward County, are the municipal government for those two unincorporated areas, and, and over the last 10 years, um, you know, we have, we have invested, um, well over $17 million of revenue. That has been raised from that same area into the area to make the major improvements. Um, so, um, you know, over the years during, from 2000 until roughly, I guess, 2015, when the last real significant annexations were taking place here in the county, um, or even probably a little earlier, um, it, you know, a lot of the commercial, what would be seen as commercially, um, ad valorem-driven revenue areas were kind of cherry picked by, um, a lot of different municipalities because they were bringing in significant, um, ad valorem revenues that would far exceed, uh, exceed what those cities would need to provide services to the areas. So now what we have are two, um, larger, you know, pockets there, um, that, that are, have been challenged, challenging for us, um, to, to provide. challenged, challenging for us to provide services, but we have really done a significantly well job, in my opinion, on bringing those areas and elevated them, and giving them a significant amount of attention. And we've done, we've got tremendously dedicated staff, we have really, in the last year or two, you know, particularly in the Central County area, Commissioner McKenzie has really shined a light on, to our staff, about the importance of really having a centralized, organized approach, and Lorette Jean in my office is what I call the BMSD Administrator. She wears a couple of hats, but that's one of the most significant ones, and she has done an outstanding job of pulling together all the resources that the county has, and we've, in fact, have a municipal org chart of sorts for the BMSD, and she attends regularly meetings in both Central County and Broadview, and reaches out to the northern part of the county as well. So, I think, you know, at this point, you know, there's been on and off over the years conversations from neighboring municipalities for interest potentially, but it's never really gone to the finish line. It started, stopped, started, stopped, and I think, you know, at this point, that's the historical perspective, and where we stand today, and I do think it would be valuable to hear from the district commissioners and anything else. I don't know, Commissioner Rogers, if there's anything else you needed me to cover, or would like me to add in that conversation.
My question only speaks to what is this county's position on annexing the other areas, and I know what it will take to hear from the communities. I would be, if I was living there, I'd say, I love my leaders, I love what we're doing, I want to stay where I'm at, but it has nothing to do with that, it's just me asking a question, where are we, Broward County? I think the areas are more attractive, and should be, with what we have done, what we have invested, I would be surprised if a city says no, you know, but it's just a conversation.
Okay. Senator Geller?
I can go first.
Okay, Senator Geller, you first.
Thank you. Historically, as my recollection was, it actually wasn't even the county, it was the legislative delegation that was pushing this. The reason for that is, as Monica pointed out, back then, I was representing, well, I had represented in the House an area which today is called West Park. In my old House district, I had West Park, Pembroke Park, although at the time, it was Pembroke Park and Carver Ranches, Lake Forest, and Twin Lakes were the three communities there. If you looked at the map, Pembroke Park was basically two trailer parks that had annexed all of the valuable commercial land around there.
And an aqua golf range. And an aqua golf range.
Yes, and the aqua golf course, which later became the Trinity, which we spent so much time, Mobile Home Park, working on.
There's a dog park there, too.
But, there, he's making that up, okay. So, the problem was, and if you've looked at a map of the city of Hollywood, and I just say that 'cause I'm very familiar with that, 'cause I was representing that area, the area along both sides of Sterling Road, the commercial, was annexed, and they even went up and took the Elanco property, which is near the airport, through a narrow, narrow strip, but nobody was annexing the residential, because you make money on commercial, and you lose money on residential. So, there were a lot of complaints, saying the people, see, if it's commercial, you can annex it voluntarily, if it's residential, you need to do a referendum under Florida law. And a lot of the areas didn't want to be annexed, because then they were gonna have two sets of taxes, city and county, and they preferred only one set of taxes, which was county. So, they thought, probably correctly, that it was cheaper for them to do it that way. But it was reaching the point where all of the commercial land was going, and the legislative delegation said, we need to stop this, so let's just try and annex everything. The problem is that the areas that were tax-positive ended up being annexed, and then you had two poorer areas, the Central County and Broadview Park. Now, recently, county has spent a lot of money in Broadview Park, put in sewer lines, I can't speak Central County, I'll only speak the area I represent, and I'm sure that he will do the same. But in Broadview Park, they've, the county has come in and put in sidewalks where nonexisted, put in streetlights where nonexisted, put in sewer lines where nonexisted. So, it is now becoming a far more attractive area to annex. When I've spoken with, I speak at the homeowner association frequently, a lot of them still don't wanna be annexed.
I think the question is, was legislature proposing that just for Broward County, or for all counties?
Just for Broward.
Just for Broward.
Broward...
How'd we get so lucky?
There are only two counties in the state, you've got Duval County, where the city and the county are co-extensive. And then you had Broward, which, at the time that we did this, was, I think, over 90% annexed, and this third place, after Duval and us, was like 45 or 50. So, and we could see that the remaining commercial areas were being annexed, so the legislative delegation then said, let's get it all annexed, not realizing at the time that there were the tax-poor areas, you couldn't get a city to take them. And that brings us to where we are now.
Okay. Commissioner McKenzie.
Commissioner Rogers, does that satisfy your appetite, or do you need more?
I just wanted to hear from you.
Well, I can almost echo or ditto what both administrator and Senator Geller has historically given your data on, and you often have heard me here, day one, come out fighting for the BMSD or the unincorporated areas, because they weren't, they were not, at the time, considered desirable, or they were less desirable, I won't use the word poor, but less desirable in the cherry-picking contests, if you will, and they got left behind. But in doing so, there were people that sat on this day, there's people that legislated up in Tallahassee, that had homed in on this problem, and made sure that the infrastructure that was spoken about was dealt with, both that district, both Broadview and Central, and the neighborhoods benefited, because someone was paying attention, even when others did not desire or want. So, when I became a commissioner in 2013, 2014, in the city of Fort Lauderdale, having lived in that area, knowing what the John Rossums and the Josephus Egleshans had done back in the day, and what was also taking place up in the southern end of the county, in what you call West Park, Carver Ranches, I spout when you said it, because it's a direct replica of what we're fighting for now, they, they were trying to champion these areas, but again, no one wanted them. So, at the city, I figured I would give it one more, another bite of the apple. And in doing so, we did a lot of research, we spent money on consultants, we even had a meeting with Bertha Henry and Monica Sparrow back in 2017, 18, to talk about it, and what often comes up is what you so eloquently said, that the economics weren't there, it's either neutral or negative impact on cities if they do it. And to Bertha Henry's credit, she came up with some ideas that could make this work, by making Delveaux Park a regional park, that would take some of the owners off the cities, and we did an enormous amount of work, and we have a commission meeting, city of Fort Lauderdale, and we do, we present the consultant's report, all the data's there, what police is gonna cost us, what water, I mean, just everything that you can possibly think of when you're proposing that a city incorporates these areas, and the consensus of my commission then was that it was revenue-neutral, and it would cause a $13 million deficit at the city of Fort Lauderdale. And even while I was dealing with Fort Lauderdale, I was looking at cities like Lauderdale, they really couldn't afford it, Fort Lauderdale was in a better position to do it, and they said, no. And I'll share this data with the administrator, I'm sure she has it, we'll send it out to you guys, so you can, you know, look at it, but then I heard circulating here recently, when Ben Sorensen came back to the commission, he wants to annex the unincorporated, well, he was one of the votes, said he didn't wanna do it. So, now, it just makes me wonder, you know, why is this an issue? Because I think, in your own admission, you said you have the best two representatives for those areas, and I think we have the best representation for those areas. Now, with this board, with this administration, that we can continue to provide the services, because what was done historically in the past, the infrastructure, that was the biggest dollar amount. Now, it's just the low-hanging fruit, getting some workforce housing there, or affordable housing, which we've identified, some things like that, Delveaux Park, making sure it's either a regional park, or Monica just continues the heavy lifting that she's doing over there now with her staff, is the only thing remaining, and it's only because I think Broward County has been watching. Even in Plantation, I worked, city of Fort Lauderdale, to do single-family houses on those pieces over there, and the same board that said no to this, proposed a affordable housing apartment complex, I'm like, no, why don't we do single-family affordable housing over there, but they said no. And then Senator Geller got involved a few years back, and I was out, and we kept talking about what it would look like. That HOA group opposed what was being proposed, and they wanted something better, homeownership, because they've already dealt with all these apartments, and some of the things that we had to clean up in the past, so they're in tune, the other four neighborhoods, I meet with them regularly, they're in tune, they like the leadership, they like where we're going, and when I hear something otherwise, I'd be more than happy to come back to this board, because if you remember, all of this, all of this data, in 2014, when I started it, and 2018, and being denied by the city of Fort Lauderdale, I was advocating for the same thing that you enquired about today. So, I think today, at least I can speak on behalf of the Central County, and to my board, that I think the BMSD is in good hands with us.
Commissioner Dean, you want to speak?
Just very briefly, I mean, we've seen it in the northern part of the county quite a bit, I've, we've actually voted on some of these, I think, where we've done some annexation and pre-annexation agreements in the northern part up in Parkland, and when it works for the residents and the landowners right there, most of them have come in to, moved out of Broward County into the city of Parkland, or some even in the city of Carl Springs, and when the residence and the area wants it, usually they get a local bill done, and I don't think we would ever be a hindrance in those cases. I remember when Bertha was here, too, at the time, we really couldn't even service those areas, because we couldn't get to them, and we were have-at it, and it's worked out. So, I think the appetite would be there if it happens, if the residents want it, they, there's a process, and we could go from there.
Senator Rich?
Thank you. I just wanna say that, you know, I've been through this whole thing in the legislature, and I saw why annexations were declined, or deferred, not put forward, and why local communities didn't want to do them. And I just feel that, you know, we here, even though we just have two of you that are actually representing, I think everybody up here feels that we represent everyone in the county, and that's how I have always felt, and I think we do a better job, and unless somebody comes and is excited about wanting to annex into a city, I don't think we should do anything. I think we should keep doing the work we're doing, on housing, on infrastructure, on everything that we can, in areas that are the responsibility of the county.
Okay, I think that's the last word. Okay, anybody else? All good? Okay, let's go to item 56, Commissioner Rogers again.
Item 56 is a motion to discuss county's foreign trade zones and opportunities to enhance the use of foreign trade zones as tools for economic development. No member of the public has signed up to speak on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I'm not even gonna say anything, because I've been hanging out all this weekend, all right, with Joe, that CEO that we have, you know, and I don't know, he promised us that he was gonna hire someone for the foreign zone area, and all the expansion, and all the tariffs, and all the good benefits of having a foreign trade zone, not just on the port property, but also in our communities, their economic engine, we just have to know more about it. So, I'm learning every day, so I'm turning it over. Joe, it's all yours.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Mr. Morris, thank you.
It's all yours, too.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, and County Admin. So, we do have a couple of slides to help tell that story a little bit, but Commissioner Rogers first, I wanna say thank you for your continued advocacy and support for our foreign trade zone, and I think that's an important thing, it's not a free trade zone, foreign trade zone, right? But, you know, there's a couple of very tangible examples, so last fall, the FITC conference, helping to arrange for those visits to some of our foreign trade zone operators, those were within the port, but again, you know, you highlight, it doesn't have to be at the port, we'll talk a little bit more about that. And then, just yesterday, at the Caribbean Shipping Executive Conference, where she encouraged more than 300 members in attendance to explore our foreign trade zone, and the opportunities that it can present to their nations, to their, their trade with us. And then also, we have, looking ahead, we have been developing a program with Sandy Michael McDonald and his OESBD team, along with Commissioner Rogers, to do an outreach program within Broward County, within our 31 municipalities, to help educate and inform and promote the use of the foreign trade zone. So, we'll get into a little bit about why that's important, but first, just a couple of tidbits about our foreign trade zone, number 25, there are actually about 200 trade, foreign trade zones in the US, and there are two in Broward County, 25 for us, and then FXC has foreign trade zone 241. But for us, we have 18 companies, now, the national average for those 200-plus foreign trade zones is six companies, so we have more than triple the national average here at our FTZ. We are the seventh-largest FTZ for export goods by value, at roughly $4.3 billion, and number 25 in terms of import value, which is also about $4.2 billion, so a 50/50 balance there, once again, on our surplus, and our foreign trade zone directly results in 318 jobs. So, what's that? High-paying jobs. So, what is an FTZ? So, there are some misconceptions out there, but for us, we have an FTZ number 25, it is called, under the alternative site framework, which means it doesn't have to be in a specific area, it's a concept, it can be a designated area, anywhere in the county, up to 2,000 acres in total for us. So, we have, like I said, 18 operators, and 12 of those are actually off-port, as it exists today. The products can be shipped into a foreign trade zone without potentially paying those import duties, could also be deferring them, and if a product, product that is remanufactured there within the FTZ can be exported, and no duties could ever be paid. So, there are some qualifications to all those, but under this federal designation, again, not a place, a designation within our FTZ, any qualified property in Broward County can be labeled under that FTZ. So, as I mentioned, coming up in the future, so in August, we will officially launch our FTZ ambassadorship program, and really what this comes down to, and there's a lot more material behind this, like I mentioned, OESBD is involved with us, but it really comes down to three questions. Do you import or export? Do you pay duties on those imports or exports? And is it more than $25,000 a year? So, that threshold is generally what we've determined to be, then it's worth exploring, using an FTZ to help defer, potentially eliminate those tariffs, or those duties that you're paying. And, as was mentioned, so it's, you know, the timing couldn't be better, but yesterday was day one for our new FTZ manager, she comes to us with a lot of experience from, actually, FTZ number 241, here in the county, but a ton of experience... county, but a ton of experience with economic development and working with the local community. So some may already know her, but I'll just ask Crystal Permanent to come on up so we can do a face and a name associated with our FTZ. Like I said, this is day two for her, so welcome, Crystal.
Welcome.
Hello, my name is Crystal Permanent, the official foreign trade zone 25 manager. As you've mentioned, thank you for the introduction. I come with a lot of experience really in trying to develop our local community. Full transparency, 16 years ago, I first worked with Commissioner Rogers when I worked at a foreign consulate. We put a lot of priority in really leveraging our community partners as far as representing the key industries of our host country and our home country. After that, most recently, I worked with the city of Dania Beach, where I had the opportunity to interface with a lot of local businesses, where I identified their challenges and really working with city regulatory departments to really combat those challenges. But prior to that, I worked with the city of Fort Lauderdale. Hi, hello, Commissioner McKenzie. And during my time at the city of Fort Lauderdale, I held several economic development functions. And I ended my career there, working with foreign trade zone 241. We did operate on a different spectrum. We operated as a grantee, which means that we really gave the operators the opportunity to run their zone. What makes Port Everglades Foreign Trade Zone 25 different is that they offer concierge services. So that's what makes it a little bit different. And during my time working in a foreign trade zone, I can say that the two challenges that perspectives have is I cannot afford it, and I don't understand it. Well, now we are working in times politically and economically where it came down to, can I afford to be in it, to can I afford not to be in a foreign trade zone? So that's the first bullet point. The second bullet point is, I don't know much about it. Well, that's where I come in. So I accept the challenge. I thank you for recognizing the challenges of our local businesses. And together with Port Everglades, in my role with FTZ 25, we are going to combat the challenges of making our local businesses here in Broward County globally competitive. And I thank you for the opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, and welcome again. I think the timing couldn't be better. Yeah, I think the timing couldn't be better.
Now, who's your favorite at City of Fort Lauderdale?
That's all I had, Commissioner Rogers. I hope that at least gets the conversation started. And as I said, we've got this ambassadorship program that we'll be rolling out with your help later this year, so thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Morris.
You talked about sister city relationships of those. I can see that happening with those at the port and the ones that are in the cities, so we can get some of that economic development going. And as I was always saying, and will always say, they don't just operate at the port. They are on our roadways, they are transporting goods and services throughout our cities and on our, you know, so we need to have that connection officially, and it benefits our cities, not just the businesses. Help to benefit our local communities. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and Monica and your team. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and thank you for bringing that to us. I think this is good information for us, given everything that's going on in the world. Good timing, good information for all of us. Anything you can send to us, individual, that would be great. If there's a brochure on FTZs that we can disseminate, that'd be great. Okay, all right, thank you. With that, we're going to go right to reports, non-agenda. Commissioner McKenzie.
I typically don't say a lot during this time.
You don't have to.
Too much already. But I was disturbed when I was handed this hand sanitizer that has Commissioner Bogan's name on it. And I sprayed it on my hands, and I've been itching, and so can we have this tested? I think PFAS is in here. And Monica, you're responsible.
I always am, thank you, sir.
No, but really, four things happened to me that I want to just highlight. One was the Downtown of the Year, Commissioner Lamar Fisher and I went there. But this year in particular, it was down home, because we had someone who was recognized for Downtown of the Year, Robert Lockery. The Lockery family dates back, I think, four generations. They might have had the first, you know, the first Fort Lauderdale hut or whatever it is. But if you know Robert, he's just as good as American apple pie. And I talked about in our budget hearing, all the units downtown, they went back historically and talked about, you know, what was happening from the CRA in Fort Lauderdale, everything from the unincorporated, probably all the way up to a federal highway and downtown corridor. And they showed where, when we had the urban flight, everybody left, and it was nobody desiring to come to either Victoria Park, Flagler Village, Sis Drunk, none of these places. We all went west for a better way of life. But as we spoke about how that happened, and the people that sat around these tables and had a vision, Lockery played a very, very important role in how these projects became what they are today. And we're talking about less than 20 years ago. No one really wanted to be on this side of town. And now we are a destination here, so I just wanted to highlight that. I also attended the Relay for Life for the survivors at Carter Park, which we do every year. It was a good event. And I went to a ribbon-cutting ceremony at Diller High School. Florida Blue started a program there at Diller High School. They took a wing, built a replica of Florida Blue Claims Department, and they're hiring seniors and juniors from Diller High School to actually process claims for their company. This is the second time I've interacted with them in doing something outside of the box, once at the YMCA, and now here at Diller High School. I've done it in other places with them, but to home in on areas that needed more, I wanted to highlight with this commission, so we were well represented with me. And the fourth thing, what was the fourth? I think it was...
You asked Lamar?
Yeah, because I think we were, oh, no. Yudene, Tamarag in Honor of the Strike. We were out there. I got a chance to actually go to their new, it's not new, it's four years old, their band shell. And I looked at a lot of the development that's around there. It's really, really nice. But they honored the many women that serve each and every day, both fire and police. And I was just glad to be there with Commissioner Yudene. He's done it, I guess, the first three times that they've done it in the city. This is my first time attending, and it was a good event. And I know that next month is Public Safety Month, so I want to just thank the folks that I shake your hands each and every time I come in this commission for what you do each and every day. So happy early Public Safety Month. I heard it's in June.
Okay, Commissioner Fisher?
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner McKenzie. We had a great time honoring Mr. Lockery III, and, you know, really here in his history of his family and in the political arena as well. They worked for congressmen and so forth, and his dad, of course, was banking. But to really, and I wish you could see the map that Commissioner McKenzie's talking about, where the Lockery family has touched the development in Florida. I think the color was orange, and I think the whole map was basically orange, wasn't it, Commissioner McKenzie? And now Flagler Village, what is happening today. So kudos to him and his wonderful family. I had the opportunity to sit with his family at his table, so I was truly honored, so thank you for that. Second thing is, Commissioner Yudene, you weren't here this morning because you had to go to a business meeting, but your team member Kyle had me at the St. Mark's Episcopal School, Mr. Piro, who I know that your beautiful daughter went to a couple of years ago, with their new science building that was built by Stiles, and everybody chipped in and made that happen. So really, kudos to that community and what they've been able to accomplish, and to see those young, I guess, children, I call them children, young men and women, really, you know, experience what that facility is going to happen and what's going to really make a difference in our community. So thank you for that. And lastly, of course, is Go Panthers. We got faith in you, and you're going to take down this series and get to that cup again, so thank you.
Senator Rich?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mike?
Yes, I have a few items I'd like to just mention. This past week, Childnet honored Cindy Aaronberg-Seltzer at an event presented by Joe DiMaggio Children's Hospital. For those of you who may not be aware, Cindy has served as the only president/CEO of the Children's Services Council of Broward County since its creation in the year 2000, which I remember explicitly running for the county commission, I mean, running for the state legislature, and running for a tax in Broward County. Thankfully, thankfully, both won. But anyway, but under Cindy's leadership, the Children's Services Council did exactly what the voters anticipated and wanted, and they have invested over $2 billion supporting over 200 provider agencies, a very strong collaboration all around the county, and really in support of Broward's most vulnerable children and families. So I was just happy to be there to help her receive her Champion for Children Award, so richly deserved. And it's just been an honor to work with her for so many years, and she was really shocked by the video, the testimonials, nobody spilled the beans. So it was really, it was really nice. Also, I just want to mention, I had the privilege of, this is the third year I've done this, it's actually the fourth year of the STEM awards presentations that the American Association of University Women does, and it was this past Saturday out in Weston. But I wanted to tell you, it kind of follows what we talked about today when we presented the proclamation. This really reflects the diversity of this community. It is just so amazing. They gave out seven different STEM awards, scholarships, and they raised the money, you know, to do that. And we had Flanagan High, Cypress Bay, Miramar High School, Sheridan Technical School, Nova High School, and West Broward High School. And the names, if I just read them to you, I mean, when I had to do all the names, I had to practice it a little bit first, because the first one was easy, Denise Alberto, but the next one wasn't so easy, Nandini Katragata. And there was another one, Sapna Malisetti, and another one, Hanista Panakalapada. So it gives you the idea of, and these children are all attending our public schools in this county, and they're all going on to colleges all across the country, from Carnegie Mellon to the University of Florida. And when you listen to their accomplishments already in STEM, it's all about STEM and promoting girls to move on in their education, STEM. What they've done already in our high schools is beyond belief, and now they're going on to colleges, and they're already getting fellowships, and it's just an amazing program. So it was just a privilege to be there. And I know you're going to do the Echo Challenge?
I wasn't, but...
Okay, I'll mention it then. Senator Geller and Mayor Fur and I were at the P3 Echo Challenge, which is a fabulous kind of awards ceremony, which took place at Long Key Natural Area and Nature Center. And we presented awards to students across Broward County Elementary, Middle, and High School for environmental projects in collaboration with Broward County Public Schools. And it was really a wonderful day, and the staff as well. Amazing, amazing. And lastly, I just want to mention that tonight, 5:30, at the Nicholas Children's, well, it's Nicholas Children's Hospital, it's Dan Marino Center, it's in Weston, they're having a celebration dedicating a new Healing Sound Garden, which is in partnership with Leadership Broward, Class of 43, and the South Florida Symphony. And it's going to be just a brief ceremony with music and light, and it's an outdoor space designed to nurture creativity, healing, and harmony for patients, children, and their families throughout Broward County. So if anybody wishes to go, I will be going. It's 5:30 at the Dan Marino Center there.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Bogan?
Only one quick thing. I don't know if you know, Monica, I was driving, and I'm on a road called Lion's Road. Do you know who that's named after?
I'm sure you might be able to inform us all.
Is that, Commissioner Fisher, do you have any idea who Lion's Road, is that your family?
Just a little bit.
That's amazing. I just found that out. Oh, my God, Lion's Road. So I've been driving on your family's name for years. It's so impressive, it's such an honor.
Can we change the name of that road?
There's a pier...
Fisher.
Bogan Boulevard.
There's a pier somewhere also, I think.
Well, is it your great-grandfather signed the Articles and Corporation for Pompano? That's incredible. Anyway.
Broward County.
Yeah.
Yep.
Absolutely.
Commissioner Yudene?
Couple of quick things. First, I just want to congratulate Sandy and the BCOESB on a great business conference that they did, the Broward Business and Beyond. I know Commissioner Bogan spoke at it. They did a, it was very well done. A lot of our small business and CBEs came up to me. They were very happy about being put together with some of the bigger groups to start bidding and keep bidding and keep doing more to keep those dollars filtering locally in Broward This is so positive that I have to mention this, and I had to actually even get talking points from Michael Ruiz, because I really wanted all the details on this. So, you know, it's been years that the city of Coral Springs has been working with Broward County on this interoperability of the hub, which is the last remaining issue that they spoke about at the MSD Commission. And, you know, for the public, it's the ability for the two CAD systems to talk to each other. It has been a heavy-duty challenge, but I'm happy to say that Coral Springs, ORCAT, Broward County, Motorola, BSO, all have finally come to the fruition of years and years of meetings and...
Integration.
What?
Integration.
Integration, years and years of meetings, and they are going to test this hub, I think in mid-June or towards the end of June, they're going to actually have the test to have the two hubs working and talking together. It goes beyond just Coral Springs and Broward County. This is the first test, and then this is something that really, when we have something at the south part of the county, this could be a nationwide thing, to let all these different police, CAD, and public safety systems talk to each other. So good job, and I just want county administration to keep us in the loop on this. I met with Coral Springs, I saw some of their leadership. They were ecstatic that we finally got in here. It takes a long time to do these kind of things. There's a lot of reasons why it takes an inordinate amount of time, technological and whatever, but I'm just happy that we are getting near the finish line on that, and I hope that's successful. And last, but certainly not least, when we talk about the Panthers, about being in the, possibly in the Stanley Cup three years in a row, kind of unheard of, but how about a shout-out to the Marjory Stoneman Douglas High School Boys Baseball Team? Five years in a row, they have won the state championship. I mean, talk about unheard of, that even beats like the Panthers, what they're doing. Five years in a row, state champions.
There's one?
Boys, five years in a row. It's like never happened. Well, it's not St. Thomas, I mean, a different division, but...
That's a top division.
Yeah, top division. Marjory Stoneman Douglas, Coach Fitz, the MSD Eagles.
That's my coach!
Coach Fitz?
Yeah!
Hey, we love Coach Fitz. And everyone that's involved with Stoneman, I love that. Everybody that's loved with Stoneman Douglas Baseball, they do a fantastic job. The program's unbelievable, and I just want to shout out. You speak to Coach Fitz, tell him I gave him a shout-out. All right.
Senator Geller? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. News on the Coral Springs stuff.
Yeah, it's good. Two items. First, last night, I did another of my town meetings, you know, again, twice a year, every city I represent, plus some other areas. I did want to give a shout-out to county administrator, Richard Tornese and Rosam Awad, come to all, in the evenings, come to all of my town meetings, because we typically get a majority of the local city commissions there. And there are, the most frequent questions that we get, that I get, are on traffic road. When is this road going to be done? When is that road going to be done? And without my even asking them, Richard and Rosam show up at every one of my town meetings, so, and I said there in the evening, I'd like to publicly recognize and thank them for that and bring that to your attention. And then the... And then the second item is, I just want to make a statement, and I guess this is the right place, the governor has signed the bill on prevent, mandating that no local governments can put fluoride in water. In March, I was on a statewide panel on fluoride because of the chairing of the Broward County Water Advisory Board. I wanted to point out that the American Dental Association, American Academy of Pediatrics, World Health Organization, Centers for Disease Control, American Medical Association, International Association for Dental Research, the Federation Denteer Internacional, the FDI World Dental Federation, National Institute of Dental and Craniofacial Research, American Academy of Family Physicians, Harvard Med School, Harvard Dental School, John Hopkins Medical School, et cetera, all had come out in favor of fluoridation of water. I am appalled that we are eliminating science from public policy. Having said all of that, I have taken an oath as an attorney and as an elected official to support and uphold the constitution laws of the state of Florida. I'm not going to say we will follow, of course, the law, because it's the law, which I don't like the law, but we'll follow the laws. But I did feel the need to just state my dismay at our loss of public health on the federal and now at the state level. I think that America is becoming less healthy, more susceptible to epidemics, et cetera, and I'm shocked and appalled, but we'll follow the law.
Yeah, I think we can all talk on that for a little while. Commissioner Rogers.
Okay, I'll be brief, don't believe that. Last, see, don't you see the audience? What's wrong with you? Go ahead.
Many people.
Yes, you and I are wearing the same glasses.
At least a dozen.
We're wearing the same glasses, for those that are still here, we love you. Hi, officers, how are you? Okay, I needed to shout out to somebody. Okay. Last week, of course, May 12th, we launched OESBD, Sandy again, on time as promised, our micro grant program, so I'm just reminding everyone, the funding's there, we just need our applicants, our small businesses to participate. So if you can help by reaching out to your chambers and your economic development leaders in your cities, that would help us get those funding out there to our community. Now tomorrow, I'm, I love children, so I'm always engaged. Tomorrow, I'll be participating in that return debriefing with the children that went to Tallahassee for Children's Week. So we provide them an opportunity to share with us what they learned and their experiences, so we will be in the city of Plantation, but I need to recognize, we can't do everything by ourselves. Our staff would be so overworked if we did not have and include our community partners. So yeah, here I go. Youth Empowerment Village, Ms. Jackie, thank you for coordinating, making everything work so smoothly. The Kiwanis Club of Lauderdale Lakes, youth group of Lauderdale Lakes, under the leadership of Commissioner Carleen Maxwell, thank you, Commissioner. Of course, Plantation Park East Homeowners Association for coordinating the room, so minimum cost, of course. And I talked to two of my colleagues, Neil Hirsch and Joe Scudo from Sunrise, for helping me to support a kid going to Tallahassee. Last minute, was able to get a young student on that bus, and for me, that was a good relationship. So colleagues, I appreciate you for stepping out, standing up, and that student that went on that tour to Tallahassee. We will be in Plantation tomorrow at 6 o'clock. If you have nothing better to do, colleagues, I'm going to share the invite, just pop in and see your kids from across Broward County. It's our investment, not just mine. As we speak to evolving industry and just continuing to build our workforce, I'm asking that we continue to remember, we can invest in those students, we can invest in those businesses to keep them in Broward County. All right, we talk about and hear about folks leaving our area, but whatever we are doing, continue to do, so we focus in keeping our business and our communities local, not leaving our area. The discussion around the veteran services outside of Broward County is not dead, we're just getting back to that trip that we made, the transportation component, how do we look at that issue, whether or not we're truly serving that population by making sure that their family members can go with them on their hospital visits and that long ride, and take a look at it, and thank God for Cory, she is helping, she's thinking, so whenever I call and ask, thank you, Monica, and just ask a question, then that energy starts and great ideas come from those conversations. That's just impromptu. We, thanks for that access. You hear me talking to Shane Strom, and I'm planting a seed as I talk, because we take good care of our patients when they're in the hospital. My concern is when they go home, and you send those nurses and the healthcare providers, that is not going well. And that's where, if we take a look at it, I'm asking us to look at the rate that they are paying, the ratio between patient and nurses, the medical field, it is not good.
But you're getting bottom of hell, that's great.
You know, I keep looking at you, and you keep being on your phone, but I'm glad you responded.
No, I'm giving you the thumbs up.
That's what that is? I'll take it.
Thumbs up.
You too. So, you know, we have things here that we can look at that's different than what we're currently doing, that is important to our constituents, and I want us to continue to look at ratios, what is being paid, and whether or not it's fair to everyone engaging. I heard my colleague brag on all of these agencies, but when I hear it from outside and you look at the diversity and you see who it represents and whether or not, when someone said, "I called for a nurse and the nurse could not relate to my parent," those are the kind of, so are we really training? Are we really making sure that we can represent the population that needs us by language or by, you know, just culture? It is part of everything we do. We can't just talk diversity and not speak to the issues that are not being addressed in that diverse conversation. So that is my, I told you I was going to be brief, so I thank you for listening and participating, and Foreign Trade Zone, bright conversation at the right time, because we need to be able to compete and know what we are doing and protect our business and that industry. Marine industry continues to grow. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Rogers. I had a few things to go over. First of all, everybody should, oh, Commissioner Davis, I'm sorry.
No problem. Thank you so much. I am looking forward to being in person, hopefully at the next meeting. You know, I'm doing a lot better, thank God, and I look forward to bringing some updates in person next time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, before I leave, I forgot to mention one person could not have happened, the trip, the visit to Tallahassee, Rep., State Rep. Lisa Dunkley, that was on the ground, she made everything smooth.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. The draft master plan for the Solid Waste Authority is out. Everybody should have a copy of it in your email now. I will be putting this on at the next meeting for a discussion item, because it has to be voted on by August. So I'm asking everybody to take a good look at it. I think most of it's pretty good. I have a couple of concerns, and you all might have some concerns, and we have to, we have to be in accordance with this, and we have to be, you know, we have to, we have the only veto, we don't like it. So we have to make sure we like it. So I want to make sure everybody gets a chance to take a good look at it. Second, I was on the, this week in South Florida yesterday, and I think it gave us, gave us a chance to talk about that as a, as a whole, as a county commission, we've done a good job in building up our reserves, building up our capital investments, our infrastructure, in preparation for down, you know, times where it's not, may not be so good. So I think we've done a good job on trying to weather the storm, if there is one, and I wanted to make sure I conveyed that to our residents. Third, Animal Care is starting a program called Broward Buddies. Before I say that, they're actually, they're, right now, the shelter is full, and we need to do anything we can, try to let everybody know that they, that we need to do some adoptions. I'm going on TV on Thursday, hopefully without a, without a handler. Hopefully, I'm okay on this one. And we'll see how that goes. But they, I know, I got three, I got three. I can't take another one. I could take another, but... What's that?
I think the order's about more than four in a row.
Oh, I don't know, I've only got three. I've only got three. That's enough. I got three hound dogs, and they love to sing in unison, and that's enough.
Our dogs.
I know, I know. Okay. But they are starting a micro-adoption program, it's called Broward Buddies, allows people to take it overnight, a few hours overnight, hopefully they fall in love with the dog or the cat, and keep it. But that, that program is starting now, I think.
Does everyone know he did a great job Sunday on TV?
I tried. Did my best.
Great job representing the county.
Thank you, thank you.
I've got the link, I'll send it to you all.
It was short. Short and sweet.
He was calm, cool, and collected.
Very cool.
Right.
Next year, next year, your chance. Yesterday was a meeting with South Florida Regional Planning Council, Senator Geller and I were there. What I'm, what I'm liking, what I'm liking to see is that the US-27 is, you're starting to see a coordination between SEFTech and Southeast Florida Regional Planning Council on a couple of issues, US-27 being one of them. I think that helps move things along. So there was a lot, a lot of good, a lot of that has to do with where freight's going to go, making room for commuter rail, and so I, I'm glad to see that going on. And with that, I want to wish everybody a happy Memorial Day.
Mr. Mayor, before you're done.
Happy Memorial Day.
Mr. Mayor. Before you're done, because we're rapidly approaching the time before we go on break, and our agendas are going to get pretty crowded, could you just take now, a couple of minutes, five minutes, and we, you can do it after we leave, as long as we're still under sunshine, for those of us who want to stay, to hear a little bit more on the reports, so that when we read it, on the solid waste reports, that when we read it, and I'll read it all, I'd like a little framework, so if you can just give us...
Now, real quick. Real quick, there was a number of scenarios put forth, five scenarios. The general recommendation is for scenario A, which is by and large, finding ways to do more recycling and that. What I'm, what I'm seeing coming out of this is, rather than this Solid Waste Authority probably building facilities or building, it's really going to probably be contracting out, which is probably not okay, and that be, and using the facilities that are already here, using, obviously, the landfill, there's lots of CND.
Which landfill?
The big one. The, yeah.
The new landfill, you mean, that the county owns?
Yes. They don't own that one. Right. But using, using the different facilities that are out there, there's a lot of CND, there's a lot, there's a couple of different MRFs, using those to the, to the maximum advantage, but also at our own landfill, probably finding a way to do a lot more yard waste there of recycling, mulching, doing that, maybe recycling glass there. You might be looking at, throughout the county, having flow control. And what does that mean? That means cities all decide, we're going to send our stuff here, and that allows for, we already do that with wheel brater, that allows for there to be an economic, you know, feasibility to happen. What you're looking at is flow control and economic feasibility to be able to, to get to a 75% recycling rate. That is a very hard thing to get to. The part that concerns me a little bit is this, is there is not a recommendation at this point with regard to a waste energy plant, and it's really just recognizing that we have one now, using it for the foreseeable future. We have to be, we have to be looking at that and wondering, how long, how long will that facility be viable? I do not want to be in the position that, what happened with Miami, when there's, when there's one down, and I don't think we want to be there. So I think that, that's one, but that may be, that may be a case where we as a county do that, and maybe the Solid Waste Authority does something on their own, and I haven't had a chance to talk to you about this, but, but those, but, but right now, that's kind of what we're doing, and it may make sense to continue to do that. That's kind of a quick lay of the land.
Okay. One question, and the last one, at my town meetings, I have, and just in phone conversations, I've spoken with many, many, many of my city commissioners, I'd say probably the majority of them, asking them, would they be willing to pay more to recycle as opposed to landfilling up in Okeechobee or something like that, touting the environmental benefits, et cetera, and the overwhelming majority of them have said, so if you're telling me that we can recycle for, let's say, $75, excuse me, we can send it up to Okeechobee for, let's say, $75 a ton, or recycle at $125 a ton, and these are the numbers I've been given, they've been pretty clear to me that they're not going to ask their residents to pay the higher amount, even though, I keep saying, but it's the local, it's environmentally better, et cetera, and that's what concerns me, because at the end of the day, we can talk flow control today, tomorrow, but if the local cities are not going to be willing to impose higher costs on their residents, we're not going to get flow control.
And when, and what you're going to have is, you're going to have four different meetings over the next month, that we'll have a chance for, to hear input on all this, to look at, what you don't have is a cost range yet, to look at all those things, but this is the next, over the next month, is the opportunity for the public to go to those meetings, have it displayed, what's going to happen, and then to go from there. Okay? You're welcome. I think that's, with that, county administrator?
Yeah, I have a couple of quick things, and I trained a catch in 20 minutes, so I'm going to try to make it fast.
You should have left 20 minutes.
I know, I'm going to run across the street. Today is Verdina Baker's last commission meeting in Palm Beach County, and they're doing something special for her, so I'm trying to get up there. I did want to commend the mayor on a, on a great job on Sunday. I will send that link out to you all. And congratulations, Florida Panthers, tonight is game one of the next series, and, and just so you know, for games three and four, the home games, our transit service has, once again, like they did last year during the playoffs, we have a, a round trip, $4 trip from Government Center West in Plantation to take people to the arena and back, and so go to broward.org/BCT for details. Speaking of the Hurricanes, no pun intended, but they are playing the Hurricanes, January, June 1st marks hurricane season, so just want to start having people, making sure you're making plans and having your meetings with your family to make sure that you are prepared for that. Commissioner Yudin mentioned the hub testing, something else I really wanted to make sure you all were aware, there's, there's something called Viper 7, and it's part of the telephony system as it really interacts with 911, but last night, our Office of Regional Communications and Technology implemented fully Viper 7. This has been something that's also in a long time been working on, and so what that is, is a software telephony upgrade that allows the 911 centers to automatically redial those dropped calls, and remember, there was some, some questions, like within the last year and a half, about the redials and the dropped calls and how those calls are made back, so it just really saves time in those emergency situations for missed emergency calls. South, the South and the North, Pembroke Pines and Coconut Creek, went live last week, and last night was the last cut-over in Sunrise, and no, no issues, everything's great, so that was a really big deal, I wanted to share that with you. And lastly, you know, there's a lot of updates, but nothing really on the legislative front, nothing that, you know, it's really a fluid, fluid process. Every day, there's kind of about three or four shifts that happen with where I think we might be headed, or where they might be headed, so just know that all of our lobbying teams... So just know that all of our lobbying teams and I am personally engaged 24 hours a day on this. And it looks like, you know, obviously the legislature needs to have their budget finalized for their July 1st, start of the fiscal year. Well, I would hope that that will happen. I'm confident at least there'll be some budget in place. I just don't know potentially what impacts might be that trickle down to the local level. But there's a significant amount of education that is taking place on how county governments actually are funded and what we fund and what the Advalorum revenues are used for. And it's not just the big dollar amount that you see as the budget because many of those dollars, as you all well know, are restricted for the enterprise funds that they are associated with, airport, seaport, water, wastewater, solid waste, all of those funds. So when you look at, and I'm saying this for the benefit of the public right now because you all know this, but we roughly have $1.8, $1.9 billion in general fund and that's it. As you well know, BSO and public safety are about half of that. So when you look at the amount of general fund dollars that are available for the services, the essential services we provide for the community, it significantly is less. And so with these provisions that might impact Advalorum, that becomes essentially a lot more concerning and something that we always are keeping a close eye on. So that's the update for now.
Okay, county auditor?
Nothing.
Nothing today, okay. Can't even, okay, thank you. With that, next meeting is June 3rd workshop, next meeting is June 10th. We are adjourned.